8, 2020, and it's 7:02 PM. And in accordance with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Order of March 12th, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, we're conducting this meeting virtually. This meeting is being recorded, actually, starting now. The April 28th Planning Board meeting is not a public hearing. It's only a public meeting. So, consistent with the Select Board's temporary policy directive and guidelines for public meeting and public hearings conducted via remote participation due to the COVID-19 state of emergency, the public is invited to view this meeting as an attendee only, and you won't have direct video or audio access. However, if you have a question during the meeting, you can use the Q&amp;A function of Zoom to type in your name and your address, just as if you were gonna announce your name and address if you were coming up to the microphone at the public meeting. And then, you know, write your question, and then I'll read it and include it in the record of the meeting. And we, of course, will answer questions to the extent that we can. Sometimes, if there's a whole lot of them, it may be difficult to get to them all. Now, for each of the items on our agenda, there will be a presentation by the applicant, and then I'll allow the applicant to share their screen and make their presentation, and we'll ask questions as a board, and then we'll ask for the public comment on each of those agenda items. And we'll have a general public comment period at the end. So, all the video screens will be turned off except for the board, the town planner, and the applicant that's currently the subject of the discussion. And then, once we've acted upon the application, the applicant can review the meeting. So, to get things underway, first, I'm gonna ask for a roll call vote of Planning Board members. So, first of all, Mr. Buzzdett, I don't think he's present. Ms. Ferguson?
Present.
Mr. Flint?
Present.
Ms. McInnany?
Present.
Nope.
Oh, there you are.
Okay, Ms. Orbital? I don't think she's present. And Mr. Saya? You can unmute yourself to announce yourself. I believe you're there.
Present.
Okay, fantastic. Okay, so now, let's move to our first item on the agenda, which I think we should put up on the screen. Are you, I don't know if Elizabeth or Chris is gonna put it up?
This is on the agenda?
Yes.
So, Chris is gonna have to scroll down to show the first item.
Sorry, can you, can you see the agenda?
Yeah, but I, we just need to scroll down.
Okay.
So, do I have the ability to scroll down on the agenda now?
No, I think I'm at the bottom of the page.
We're still not seeing it.
Okay, let me try new. How about now?
We're just seeing, there we go. Thank you. So, first item is the recommendation to the zoning board of appeals that the Planning Board's making for the application of Now Communities LLC for a special permit under Sections 10 and 11/6 of the zoning bylaw for a 14-unit planned residential development at 1651, 1657, and 165X Main Street. So, do we have the applicant? I think we can promote him to being a participant and yield the floor.
Matt, just a note, since I'm a director of butter, I'm accusing myself of this.
Oh, yes.
So, I'll go to participant status. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. We will demote you presently. Thank you for that.
And then, I also believe that Hallie and Nathan?
I see Nathan is now joined as a member, so he, welcome him to the meeting.
So, I believe Hallie and Nathan need to unmute.
And Hallie, I see.
And say your presence.
Who's Nathan Bossett?
Hi, Nathan.
Haley Orbitals here.
Hi, Haley. Okay. So, we now have a full house. So, do we also now have Dan? Dan, could you identify yourself?
Can you hear me? Dan Gainesborough?
Yes, yes, we can. Thanks.
And I'm trying to share my screen, but it's saying that I can't do that until...
Yeah, Chris has to stop sharing.
Okay.
Let's see. Thank you. Now, you can share, Dan.
Okay. Share. And, can you guys see that?
We can. Beautiful.
Awesome, awesome. Well, are you ready for me to begin?
Please proceed.
Okay. Well, thank you all for coming out tonight virtually. This is a new and interesting experience, for sure. So, I am Dan Gainesborough, and my company, Now Communities, developed Concord Riverwalk. And I'm excited that tonight I get to share with you a vision that began with Riverwalk and now continues with Waterside Commons. Before I do that, I thought it might be helpful just to maybe explain why we designed the communities the way we do. And really, it's for a simple reason. What we've learned in the 10 years since we completed Riverwalk is where we choose to live really matters. It matters in terms of how much energy we consume. It matters in terms of how we spend our free time, and even the level of connection that we experience with our neighbors. So, in short, from my perspective, it's kind of the quality of our lives. So, now, communities are designed specifically to address all these considerations and to be beautiful to boot. So, these three themes will continue through my presentation tonight. I'll come back to them, but let's see how this works. So, I thought it might just be worth mentioning or pointing this out. I can honestly say that before, when I began Riverwalk, which was in 2008, and thinking about it, this kind of thing, this recognition, industry recognition, was probably the furthest from my mind. But despite that, I think it's pretty cool to be recognized by these prestigious organizations. And perhaps even more importantly, is that they recognize it, and the word is getting out about this model of development in terms of smart, sustainable growth. And so, for that to happen, I think is beneficial to all of us. The other thing that has come out of the experience is that I've been invited in a number of occasions to speak to both planning industry groups as well as other municipalities. And what I've heard pretty regularly is that Riverwalk is sort of considered the gold standard for that smart, sustainable growth. And it's often the means by which other projects or proposed projects are measured. Another sort of lesson that I've taken away from it is I realized just how fortunate I was to have developed my first community in Concord. And I say that because Concord is both a very well-run municipality, and perhaps even more important is the level of progressive viewpoint. And that's, that's really, I think, was instrumental in sort of the genesis of Riverwalk. The other thing to point out, and probably not gonna be lost on any of the Planning Board, is that we in the town value our open space and certainly preserving the historic and rural character of the town. So, with this in mind, let's take a look at Waterside Common. I thought I would include this first slide. And Matt, I can use my cursor, right? You can see that? Okay.
We can, we can see you move your pointer. Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. So, just to orient everybody, the site is bounded by Main Street to the north, the Assabit River to the south, Riverwalk to the east, and Westfield Meadows to the west. And another good point of reference is the Damon Mall, which you can see right up here. So, you can also see from the aerial photo that it's in a part of town that already benefits from what I would call density done well. There's, it's quarter acre zoning, which means that the minimum lot size in this part of town is 10,000 square feet. The parcel, the site, is made up of three individual parcels, which will be combined into one in the course of the project. And for area comparisons, the Waterside Commons total land area is just under 4.7 acres, and Riverwalk by comparison is just over 3.7. So, this, our site is, this new site is about an acre more. The, it too benefits from this strong north-south orientation, which will allow us to take advantage of the sun. Topographically, it starts at elevation 150 up on Main Street, drops fairly quickly in this first 100 feet or so, maybe 13 to 15 feet, and then gradually makes its way all the way back to the river here, and it ends up at about elevation 120. So, there's about a 30-foot grade change from Main Street to the river. The site will also have riverfront access, and we are looking forward to an opportunity to potentially, to expand and connect both with Riverwalk and possibly with the Westfield Meadow community. So, this is an enlarged plan. It takes our concept plan, and it blows up, and so, same orientation. So, Main Street's up here, river's down at this end. I think it would be helpful just to point out, this dotted blue line indicates the limits of the resource area. And in this case, we're dealing with both the wetlands and the flood plain. And so, you can see that all of our work, all of our new work will take place outside the resource areas. In terms of the, the entry and arrival on the project, I want to point out a couple of things. One, we've been very fortunate through a lot of hard collaborative work and a very constructive relationship with Riverwalk. We have come up with what I think is a significant improvement to the entry scenario. So, we're essentially taking the existing drive and moving it about 10 to 15 feet to the west, and that will take some of the pressure off the homes that are right at the front end of Riverwalk and allow us to do some screening along this, between the two projects. So, if you're arriving from the east, say Route 2, you're headed west, you'll turn into the site this way. If you're coming from the west and you're headed east, you'll turn in this way. You'll come to a T-intersection, and you'll either, if you live in Riverwalk, you'll turn left into that, or you'll turn right into Waterside Commons. Similar to Riverwalk, the site is basically divided into two courts, an upper court and a lower court by this drive and parking area. On the upper court, well, there'll be a total of 14 new homes. On the upper court, there'll be six homes, two single families right here, and then four homes in two duplex buildings. And these will be one-bedroom flats. We'll talk a little bit more about that later on. And then, on the lower court, I, pretty much identical to Riverwalk, there'll be eight detached, single-family homes surrounding or a shared common, and then a community building at the end of it. I want to point out that if you look here, you'll see sort of this bright green lane. That is currently, the Emergency Act was constructed as the emergency access, the means by which emergency vehicles could access the project. It also, during the day, dusted on, is the public access for folks that want to access the Riverwalk Trail. And what we've done in the new project, Waterside Commons, is we're essentially replicated that, but instead of it being on the edge of the project, it actually runs right down the center of the project. And you may be scratching your head saying, doesn't really look like that. Well, so, the way we're doing it is it's a combination of a paved surface, and then to widen out that, make it a drivable 12-foot lane, we add reinforced turf on, on the side of it. And essentially, what's great about that is when it's not being driven on, it looks just like crass, and it will support emergency vehicles, and it gives them greater access to the, to the homes. And I will point out a couple of the shared amenities, and we think of these as connection amenities, and those are daily sort of functions. It can be as mundane as bringing your trash and recycling to a, what will now be a shared area between the two projects, and as well as a mail station and the community building, as well as gardens. And what's, what's cool about that is one of my Riverwalk residents pointed out that he met more of his neighbors in the first 10 minutes of living in Riverwalk than he did in 10 years of living in Somerville. And I think that speaks volumes to how these communities can really enhance and encourage connection. The homes will be similar size to Riverwalk. In fact, one of the plan carries over directly, but they will be very similar in scale and utilize not-so-big footprints. And the architecture will continue with a cottage-style architecture. In terms of the parking, so this is the same plan again, just sort of graying out the, the plan a little bit to focus on the, the parking. Each one of the units now has a, and I don't know how well you can read this, but they each have a unit number, and those correspond with a parking space. There, there, there will be two car barn structures, a six garage structure there, and a two-bay garage structure here. In addition, the two single-family homes on the upper court will have what we call tuck-under spaces, and so, there'll be a total of four spaces available in those buildings. And then, so, the total parking count, and then there's a series of surface spaces. The total count is 28 spaces, 12 of which will be covered, and 16 of which will be surface spaces. So, it uses that same approach that we did in Riverwalk of corralling the cars, and this enables folks to, in both cases, to live on a park rather than park where they live, and that seems to be important to our, our resident. The other thing I should point out is that very often, certainly this was the case next door, our, a lot of our residents are less reliant on, on, less car reliant, and many of them have just one car. And I think a lot of them take advantage of the convenient walk to West Concord Center and the accessing the train and the bike path. The other great thing about our layout is that by comparison to a standard conventionally-designed project, even our next-door neighbor here to the west, we have 60% less paved area, and I think that's a significant benefit. The other thing that comes out of this new iteration is there's an opportunity, unlike Riverwalk, where emergency vehicles, when they came down, the apparatus would come in and turn here, they would have to back up all the way onto Main Street. So, with the introduction of this T-intersection, now they'll be able to come to an event in either project and back out, and then pull out directly onto Main Street, and that's a much safer condition. The next slide tries to highlight what's similar, what will carry over, and what's new between the two projects. And so, I won't necessarily read all of them, but I'll try to highlight the ones that I think are maybe most important to everyone. Obviously, folks are gonna continue to enjoy a short walk to West Concord. The homes are designed to require 60 to 70% less energy, and we do that through high-performance, net-zero, possible solar-ready building envelopes, so that they, all the homes are ready to have their PV installed on them, should folks decide to do that. Obviously, well, all, all of the homes are all electric, so they're completely powered by electricity and can be, therefore, energized by renewable power. The, we're utilizing low-impact development techniques to manage our stormwater, and what, you know, that's kind of a fancy way of saying that we're gonna collect the water in swale, planted swales, and let the water infiltrate, be absorbed into the plants. And that really allows our, you know, our, our residents tend to really put a high value on, on living among nature. Typical resident, we fully expect, will continue to be empty-nester, single professionals, and maybe some young families. Our folks really enjoy living in a diverse, age-diverse community. And the materials will continue to be selected based on their longevity, the non-VOC qualities, and the low-maintenance requirements. Means, therefore, it means people will be spending less time maintaining their homes. So, there's that free time theme that I mentioned. We, we do have two existing structures on the two, two of the parcels. One is a two-bedroom, single-family home. In addition, there is a large barn that was converted in the 80s into a single-family home. And we did explore the part, you know, the possibility of reusing them, and ultimately came to the conclusion, we cannot. We will, like Riverwalk, make use of many elements of those homes. So, they will continue on. From an open-space perspective, our project has in excess of 70%. Of the site is, is, will go into, will be permanently protected with a conservation restriction. In terms of a process, we continue to do outreach to both major communities and other folks living around the project. The operations we manage by an HOA, and perhaps most importantly, the project team continues. In terms of what's new, so, we've added two affordable units, portable homes, and, and one of which will be added 80% income. We're going to pre-wire our car barns with, so that there's, can connect an EV charging, electric vehicle charging stations. There, this is new, that all of the homes now, this was done in discussion with the fire department. All of the homes will be, we will install residential fire protection. And then, a little different than last time, the community building, which is a major amenity, connection amenity for folks, and gets a lot of use, even, you know, the Hardy Souls next door will use it in the middle of the winter. But we've, we're proposing that it actually be able to be four-season. And I think that's, body for that slide. There have been some technological material advances and fabrication advances, which we can certainly cover later on or in a future meeting. Include this for folks at home. It may not be as familiar with the purpose and objectives of the PRD. I'm not gonna read them all, but I will point out that, you know, our, our project and Riverwalk before, it checks all of these boxes. And in fact, one might consider it that a Now Community, Community is sort of poster child for, for all of these ideas. And I added the last two points, because I think they're important, and although they may not be specifically called out in the PRD, it's obviously on everyone's mind. Both our sustainability goals are articulated and passed in Article 51, as well as the long-range plan envisioned Concord Bridge to 2030. And we are in early conversations with the Westfield Meadow folks and Riverwalk, and trying to see if we can expand the trail network along the river. And this is my final slide, and it's really probably one of my favorite pictures of Riverwalk. I like it because it really speaks to the beauty and the strong sense of place that we're able to create, and to show that, you know, what can happen when, when a project is carefully crafted and executed. And I think, I'm confident that Waterside Common will extend this important and attainable way of living for a new group of residents. And so, I thank you for your attention. And now, I'd like to just introduce my talented team. With me tonight, I hope, or supposed to be, is Danny Carr from Stamsky and McNary. They did the site engineering. Jeremy Lake from Union Studio Architects, who did the amazing land planning and the, and will do, and the design of the homes. Jared Joyce from Good Roots was, is the designer of the landscape. I just literally got a text from him in saying that, and to his credit, he came home and he has some young babies, and wife was exhausted, and so, he apologized. He actually thought the meeting was in May. And so, he will be available for a future meeting, but, and to talk about the landscape design. I think what's important, just, I will say tonight about Jared is Jared is responsible for the landscape that you see here in the photograph, and we not only brought that design sensibility, but also, what does it take to maintain and have a flourishing environment like this? So, without further ado, I'm gonna hand it over to Danny, if that's, if that works.
Okay, thanks.
Do I need to stop sharing my screen, or?
I think that would work. Yeah. Danny, do you wanna?
Yes. I'm just trying to share my screen while...
Yeah, I think you're gonna have to wait until Dan. There we go.
There we go. All right. So, like Dan Gainesborough said, my name is Danny Carr. I'm from Stamsky McNary. And we did the work on the, the stormwater design and the layout and grading of the project, and as well as the septic and sewer design. So, I think it'll be important to go through how we are controlling stormwater on the site. As, as Dan mentioned, we are shifting the entrance drive for Riverwalk about 10 to 15 feet to the west, so that the new entrance drive is gonna straddle the property line between Riverside or Riverwalk and Waterside. And so, that'll match basically existing, the, the existing grade of the entrance drive. And so, we have crowned that entrance drive, so half of the road will drain into the Riverwalk existing drainage, and we made sure that that was less than the existing entrance drive. And then, the other half of the entrance drive is gonna drain into the Waterside property. And we have super-elevated the entrance drive, so that the water is forced to one side of the development. You can see on this plan here, so, the water comes down here, the curb will be on the side, and then it runs, the road is sloped down all the way to the end of the car pavilion two. And then, so, the, this side of the road will have a curb, and it'll force all the water down, and then it'll come off the end of the road here by car pavilion two, and it'll flow over a, a treatment trench, which is just like a, a three-foot wide by two-foot-deep trench filled with stone and wrapped in filter fabric. And so, that treats the runoff coming from the road. And then, we're proposing a berm along the property boundary. And then we're proposing a berm along the property boundary with Westville to force the water down behind the units and into this large infiltration basin at the back of the property. And so the overland flow for the walkways, that all, basically, pretty much the whole site drains to this infiltration basin here. And we did soil testing on the site, and there was good sandy soils, which was expected along the river. So we're able to infiltrate a lot of runoff in this basin here. And I think it's worth mentioning that the, after it gets treated over the treatment trench, the stone trench, it goes into a sediment for bay, which further treats it. And then actually, a second sediment for bay as well, before going into the basin. This plan is a little bit different than what we submitted, just because we were, we have been taking in all the various town board's comments. So previously, we had two infiltration basins in the back. But this new design, we're going to simplify things and just make one big basin in the back there. And we thought it was a cool feature now to have a footbridge across the basin there so that residents can get to the open space in that trail that goes down to the Assabit River. So, oh, and also, I know there was a question about these rectangles on the plan. Those are roof drywells. We tried to fit in as many roof drywells as we could to take the strain off of the basin, so it wouldn't have to be larger than it already is. And so wherever we could fit in some roof drywells, we did, like this one here for unit three. So all the roof runoff will be directed to that drywall for various units. So that takes care, takes care of that impervious runoff. And then just on the other side, along the border with Waterside, just the natural topography of the land is going to force runoff into that basin with a little help, a couple, just a couple inches of a swell that would have to be created here to force that water into the basin there. So it's really not much runoff that will escape this basin at the very low end of the project development area. And then also, there are some drywells for the upper court as well. You can see that we needed slightly bigger roof drywall for the duplex units, because there had a larger surface area. And you can see this hatched area here is, these two hashed areas are the existing entrance drive, which that'll be removed, that pavement, it's pavement to be removed in that area. So that can provide snow storage areas, as well as some screening for landscaping. But that, that's just gives you a good idea how much we're shifting the road to the west. This is the existing edge, and then we're moving it down to here. And so, like Dan mentioned, this will be an improvement for emergency access, because it's basically creating a T-turnaround for fire trucks or any other type of vehicle that needs to get in here. But also, it can, you know, it can come down here, and it can, a fire truck, say, could come down here and then go straight onto the emergency access that exists along the Riverwalk development. And then more trucks could come and park in various areas. And this hashing here, like Dan described, is that grass paver. So this, these grass pavers, along with the paved walkway, creates a strip where an ambulance could come in and get all the way down to the bottom, to the lowest unit, and that'll provide a good access there. And it'll also help or provide access for a, like a pickup truck or some, some type of vehicle for maintenance on the basin, because, you know, sediment sometimes builds up there. So it serves two purposes there. And we're also proposing to remove the emergency access. We previously had shown one to Westville, but the grades don't really work. It was twelve percent grade, the engineering department had a problem with that. And now we're proposing to have a fire protection in all the units, which the fire department was okay with. So we're going with fire protection instead of access roads to Westville. For septic, we're proposing, was it, twelve bedrooms to be on septic? And those twelve bedrooms will come from the lower court. And so that'll be, you know, unit three, four, five, and eleven and twelve. Those units will flow by gravity into a septic tank, which will get sent to a pump chamber. And then the pump chamber will send the wastewater up to the distribution box. And then this outline here is the soil absorption system. And we're proposing a Presby system, an advanced Presby Enviro Septic Leaching System, which provides some treatment to the effluent before it infiltrates into the ground. So even though we're not required to do that, this system is providing treatment for the effluent. And then these other dashlines are just potential reserve septic areas, which we have to prove per Border Health Regulations. And so those four units, or five units, sorry, will drain, will be used by septic. And then the rest of the units will have town sewer. And so what we're proposing for the town sewer is E1 grinder pumps. So these little circles here are individual grinder pumps. So each unit will have a grinder pump. And so the wastewater will flow by gravity into the grinder pump, and then it'll send it to a common sewer main. And then that's the combination of all the grinder pumps will send the sewer, the sewage up into Main Street where there is an existing sewer manhole. And I know that we need to go in front of the DPW in order to get that permitted. And we are planning on doing that shortly. So about half, half on septic and half on sewer, although probably more on sewer than on septic. Because of the limited area, really, with the density of the development, we're trying to keep as much as we can on town sewer. Because we like to keep the soil absorption system out from underneath the pavement as much as possible, which is why we kind of force it in this little area here between the two car pavilions in the walkway. We're proposing to tie in to the water main that exists, that serves Riverwalk currently. So proposing to tie the water in and go behind a couple of the units in the upper part of the lower court, and then go into the center of the development, where we're proposing a fire hydrant, which was at the request of the fire department. And then the water line is proposed to loop into Westville here and provide another hydrant here. So we're, we're improving water quality by looping the water main and helping out Westville, who has, currently has a dead-end water main here, and also providing a hydrant. And so in an emergency situation, you know, we could have fire trucks here in the emergency access existing on Riverwalk. We could have a fire truck at the end of the proposed Waterside development, and we could have a fire truck in the Westville Meadow here. So we really have, you know, lots of contact all around the development for emergency vehicles, including that, that grass paver path along the middle of the development. So I think that basically covers our scope of what we have done with this development. Oh, I should mention the trash collection area. We are proposing to have a common trash collection area for both Riverwalk and Waterside. So currently, the trash collection area for Riverwalk is about right here off the access road. And so obviously, when we shift the road, that'll have to get moved. And so Dan Gainsborough spent a lot of time with the Riverwalk residents in determining what they wanted to do with the trash collection area. And so we came up with a good spot here, which is large enough to, you know, to have the bins for both the proposed development and Riverwalk. And it's not much, it's pretty close to where the existing trash collection area is for Riverwalk. So it's not a huge difference for them.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to correct one thing in Danny's presentation, that actually, we're going to be looping our water line with Riverwalk. It is still a possibility that Westfield Meadows will want to do it. They're doing, they're evaluating their existing water quality. But we definitely will be doing it with the Riverwalk community. They've expressed interest, and it makes a lot of sense.
Okay, so instead of it going down this way, the water line will loop back towards this way and maybe go around unit ten. And you can see the existing water line there. So we'll be able to easily loop that in, because it is currently a dead-end for Riverwalk as well. So that'll be an improvement. But I think I've covered everything else. If you guys have any questions?
I think, did you have other presenters stand that you were gonna?
Well, Jeremy is the only other person that, we can, if you want to check in with him, Matt, see if he wants to.
Well, I see Jeremy is a participant now, if he wants to.
I'm here.
He can give you a quick overview of the.
Yeah, so Danny, if you stop sharing.
Yes.
I still see you sharing.
Yeah.
There we go.
All right, so you guys can see my screen and hear my voice?
Yeah, now we can.
Okay, excellent. Well, I'm Jeremy Lake with Union Studio. I will say, I know in the interest of time, we were supposed to be in about a half hour, and, you know, we've already gone past that.
It's a nominal timeframe.
Okay, okay. Well, Dan and Danny have done a great job so far. I think sharing sort of the big picture highlights everything that we intend to do here. I will also say, we typically do a, you know, a whole dog and pony show, trying to make sure you guys understand the scale and the character of the architecture and the spaces that we're proposing. But in this particular case, obviously, we have, you know, the great advantage of there being a living, breathing example right next door in Riverwalk. We really do see this as an extension of that community and really trying to build on its strengths, and, you know, the wonderful things it was able to achieve. So I don't think I need to go into any much more depth. I think, as I said, they did a good job covering the highlights. I could certainly address any questions folks might have about either the site design or the architecture. I think the only thing I wanted to point out that I don't think was maybe made clear was the stacked flats at the front of the project. Really, what the impetus behind those was the fact that there is a lot of grade change, really right up at the front of the site. And it gave us the opportunity to come up with a strategy where effectively the upper units in both of these structures would have their front doors really at the elevation of Main Street, you know, up a few steps. But really, their front doors feel like they come right out onto Main Street or onto the small space we have at the front. And then you would come down a series of stairs comparable to what you do in Riverwalk. And the lower units would then actually be able to connect out through this sort of lower court, which is where these units sort of connect and tie in. And then down a few more stairs, which allowed us to then do the tuck-under approach for the garages here. So really, in that sequence of the way the grade falls through, in Riverwalk, we use that as a means of getting a lot of parking sort of tucked underneath of units in the northern portion of that drive. Here, we took a slightly different approach, which really let us introduce a new unit type, introducing one-bedroom units, which we think is a really sort of neat thing to be able to do here, with the rest of the cottages being two bedrooms. So again, I won't belabor any of the other points that have already been made, but I'm happy to answer any questions you guys might have.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Okay, then. So if that's the conclusion of the presentation, I think that we'll move to questions from the board about this initial presentation. We also have in hand the planner's report about this. And there were a number of questions from town staff. And I don't believe that all of them really were addressed in your presentation, Dan. I didn't know if you wanted to just start off with maybe addressing some of those. For example, the grade of the driveway, you know, combinations for, I think you have addressed some of the questions about fire, you know, by providing the control systems within the houses themselves. But others, you know?
Yeah, so since we introduced the residential fire protection throughout all the homes, and we have that lane, the reinforced turf lane, it allows them to have access. The fire department seems comfortable with that approach, and we no longer need to rely on access through Westfield Meadows. And I know that that was a lot of the engineering comments. In terms of some of the other ones, for example, municipal light plant, we, and even the water and sewer, we will need to meet with those folks. We've already met with them a couple of times. And we will be meeting with them over the next week or two, assuming that they can be available. They're all working in sort of a limited, really only prioritizing maintaining the existing systems. But our hope is that we'll be able to meet with them and address. I don't see, the only one, Matt, to your point, that I see as an issue, and I don't even know if that's the right way to characterize it, is the existing, you know, the grade of coming into the, into the project. And there may be an opportunity to reduce it a little bit. I don't want to overstate that, but there may be a chance, and Danny kind of referred to this, we can maybe pick the toe of the slope up a little bit, and then sort of feather it down as it goes into both projects. There will be a limit to that, because we have to tie into an existing garage slab going into sixteen thirty-one Main Street, one of the live-abus.
How about the question about the height of the flats building?
I believe all of the buildings have been adjusted. And we submitted an updated document to Elizabeth. I hope that made it way to her. But we've adjusted the heights of the buildings so that they will all adhere to the building height concern. So none of the buildings will exceed the building height, a lot of building height.
So Dan, that's something that we'll have to look into again, because the last set of plans I had still showed the one flat being thirty-eight feet to the peak.
I think Danny Carr, I don't know if he's still available to talk, but I thought he worked with Kristina from Union Studios, and I thought they updated a chart, but maybe I'm, maybe I'm.
But I have not provided that to Elizabeth.
Okay.
It's just.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
No, no worries.
We will see it. And what I can report is, as I said to Matt, they have been adjusted. The heights will be adjusted so that they, that's not an issue.
Okay, so now I will open it up to the board. If any of you has a question or comment, please. Give it a shot. Kristen?
Thank you. That was great to hear about that. I remember I moved to Concord about ten years ago, and Riverwalk hadn't been built yet. And I was just a little bit late for that. So I had two questions. One, you mentioned the EV charging. Based on what I heard, you kind of indicated you would probably leave the wiring able to do that, but not install the EV infrastructure. Is that your plan?
So I can, I can answer that this way. If, if we, if we pre-sell the project, and it's clear that we have a better idea of who will have an EV and who won't, we will probably go ahead and just continue on in the full installation of that. If we don't know, then we will probably just say that we will provide sufficient power to those structures so that anybody can plug into it. And it's really, you may be familiar with this. It's a relatively, a type-two charger these days is a relatively modest expense. It's, I have one, it's probably three, four hundred dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and by the way, what we have talked about is potentially putting a, a charge station at one of the surface spaces, so that. So that people could, who might just be scooting in, the spaces along the common, as long as it, you know, isn't in an eyesore, I'd love to put one maybe right there.
Okay. My second question is more of a curiosity thing. I noticed in Riverwalk on this, you're proposing primarily single family units. Tell me a little bit about the choice to do that rather than units with shared walls and things like that, townhouse type units.
That's a good question. I think, I think we're excited because we, in this case, as Jeremy mentioned, we were able to include the stacked flats. In Riverwalk one, you may, may not realize this, there is one duplex unit. It has a shared wall, so it's two, two bedroom units, if I'm remembering correctly. And so I think from, I guess my, my thought is on that is that it seems to be that folks that are expressing interest in this seem to still want to have their, their own building. And, and so I guess we're catering to what the market is driving. And I think the way we kind of offset that is to, by having smaller footprint buildings. And so, and we didn't talk about this this time around, but the buildings are very specifically designed to be, to do what's called nesting, so that they kind of turn their back on one side of their elevation to their neighbor, so that there's privacy on for both parties. And so, and I think that, that along with the high performance building envelopes allows folks to have not only visual privacy, but acoustical privacy. Because the buildings really are very quiet when you're inside them. And so I think what happens in these communities is people, you know, the folks that feel like interacting socially, they move out to their front porches and they hang and they interact and they, or they invite people in. But at the same time, because you are in relatively close quarters, you're able to retreat. We didn't focus on the architecture yet, the internal layouts. But as the plan, as each one of the plans on the commons moves from the common side of the house, the more public, as you make your way into the buildings, they become, the program of the house gets more and more private. So it's those kinds of things like bedrooms and things are away from the common. So you're, you know, in a close knit community like this, and Jeremy can probably, you know, speak to this much more articulate than I can. But you know, you have to, you're designing these, these scenarios. Public community privacy in a much smaller footprint. So I'm not sure I answered your question, but that's kind of what came to my mind.
Yes, thank you.
Great.
Hey, anyone else? Questions? Anybody? All right, well, then I have some questions and comments. So first of all, Dan, I, I think that looking at this in terms of, you had mentioned is our PRD evaluation criteria. I think that I see a lot of positive things here in terms of the scale and diversity of the units. The commitment to sustainable development practices, the retention of topology. The low impact development practices, these are things that, you know, we're actually going to town meeting to try to enshrine into our bylaw. The reuse of the existing driveway to limit the amount of impermeable surface. The use of centralized car barns in one space per unit to limit the scale of car infrastructure. And then the provision of at least the capability to have EV charging. And then also just adding on those affordable units. You know, which weren't absolutely required. So those are all very positive. I do have a number of questions, however. And it, one of the things that just struck me overall in this, just starting with the name, but then also just with the configuration of the project is that this, to me, for all intents and purposes, seems like Riverwalk two. I mean, it's sharing the driveway, this shared trash and recycling. You know, it does sound like too, that the common building may be, you know, kind of a common asset for the two communities. I just wonder, you know, is there even more opportunity to kind of share and to create this as kind of a single broader community? Especially given that I think that Riverwalk's going to have to, you know, provide an easement and all kinds of other cooperation anyway. And it does also point to one of my open questions, which you haven't addressed yet, which is the provision of common open space. And you know, the, the sort of shape and character of that space, especially the upland requirement, given the amount of wetlands on your site. I, it's not clear to me yet, you know, how much common open space and how it's configured. But if it was configured kind of in cooperation or adjacency to Riverwalk, then the shape of it could be a little different. Or, you know, there'd be more opportunities, I guess, to leverage the site to get a bigger common open space. So I guess, you know, those are kind of my biggest questions. I also wonder, having walked the trail down there, whether there's any plan to remediate any of the invasive species that are on the site. And that also, finally, the existing buildings, given that they, they weren't able to be incorporated. You know, as was, how are you using elements of those buildings? I don't really see how they're being used. So those are my questions, kind of the, the idea of, well, is this really Riverwalk two? If not, why not? Second, that, you know, how's the common open space set up? And then, you know, third, these existing buildings.
Okay. Well, I'm not sure I'm going to be able to answer them all definitively tonight, but I can certainly give you some initial impressions. I would, I am very open to the possibility of there being, we have had conversations with, with Riverwalk community. I think they really enjoy their independent identity. In fact, at one point, I spoke with them about the possibility of utilizing their name and somehow. And, and I think that this is kind of, in a way, I'm, it's almost like your, your children, right? They all have independent identities and you want to sort of, you know, you want to trumpet that or celebrate that. And so, and so the fact that they feel a very strong sense of ownership in one regard means the world to me. And at the same time, I think I respect their desire to sort of take one step at a time. And so I hope, and I can't promise right now, but I hope that and if the last couple of weeks are any indication, and maybe broader said, the last few months are any indication. I fully expect that we will continue to be talking about it and figure out what things make sense to share. They've already allowed for the possibility of shared trash and recycling and the landscape maintenance of the shared and the road maintenance of, and there will be easements. You're absolutely correct, Matt. And so those will be memorialized. And so, and I think if we're allowed to do the four season community building, I think there'll be a natural draw in terms of possibility of folks coming over and using them at different times of year. But, but I, you know, I don't want to speak for, and can't speak, cannot speak for the Riverwalk folks about that. In terms of invasives, I, I, I fully expect if, if Riverwalk is any indication, to their credit, they, as a community organized, and at least this is what, the last time I talked with them about it. They have, I think it's a couple of times a year where they, as a community, go down and remove the invasives along the Riverwalk path. And I would imagine that that will continue with this, with this development, this community. And I think that I'm hopeful, I kind of mentioned it maybe quickly in my presentation. But we are absolutely exploring the idea of expanding and connecting the loop so that folks could walk down Riverwalk, for example, along the river and then come back up through waterside common. And that would, that would provide the public during dusk to dawn greater access and a longer trail to enjoy. In terms of the existing buildings, you're absolutely correct. There's no, there's no indication on the plans right now, but similar to Riverwalk where we, we use several elements. We use the foundations from the original 175 year old structure that we had to create our little mini stone hedge and a seating area. And we, so we'll certainly be looking to, for opportunities to utilize that portion of the building. And then the red barn has some beautiful timbers in it. And so we will use those to, in the, I expect, will you be able to use those in the construction of the community building? And we'll have, we will be building a mail station. And at one point, and I don't know that this made its way to the latest iteration, but we had sort of a bookend to the community building that we're showing that's most, most south on the property. We had a similar, a much smaller structure up by Main Street, just almost like a bus stop or a place to be out of the shade. And so I can imagine doing something with that as well. I think I answered.
Yeah, does your site plan indicate the common open space?
I'm gonna let Danny Carr answer that.
Sure, yeah, so the, the site plan, let's see, what sheet is this?
And then the calculations too, just the percentage of common open space, the percentage of the common open space that's upland.
Sure. So we have, let me get this up. So common open space must, must equal at least 25% of the total area. And 25% of the total area is 51,000 square feet about. And we're proposing 145,000 square feet. So that is what you're saying?
Yeah, but then of that, how much of that is wetland? You know, so what you can count has to be at least 50%.
Right, so we meet that 25% of total area requirement. And then 50% of the, that required area has to be upland. And we are, we're, you know, we're at like 50.1% as upland.
Right, right. I would assume that's where you'd end up.
Yeah, that, that is our limiting factor.
What do you end up with net when you do that, you know?
If you removed the.
The wetland that can't count towards common open space because it's in excess of the 50%.
Okay, so we, let's see.
And then the other key thing is just the shape, you know, of the common open space. So it can't be just like the perimeter of your site or.
Right, so the, the open space is basically, once you get past the infiltration basin, that's all open space, all the way down to the river. And there are, there are a little bit around the perimeter, just to keep, you know, a buffer between waterside and.
Yeah, and that could be open space, but it's just it won't qualify for common open space. So I guess, I, I think maybe, you know, we will have a second presentation here. And that's one of the things I think we'd like to drill down on in the next session.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board?
Hey, Matt, more of a clarifying question. I don't know, we don't have to pull up the diagram again, but just, maybe I missed this, but just to confirm. Are the two affordable units clustered over with the duplex units? Is that how, as you saw it, with the road going in between, is it all of the sort of bigger single family homes on the left side of the map? And then the affordables are with the duplexes on the right?
Yes, so, so all of the affordables will be in the two duplex structures.
Okay, oh, those are, okay, but those are on, those were all on the right with the other single, like one bedroom units, right?
Correct, so there's, there are, there are two market rate, one bedroom. In each building, there'll be one market rate unit and one affordable.
Okay. Got it, got it, got it. Yeah, I don't know, just an observation of, I mean, I'm sure there's justification for why, why that would be. But like, it just, it was notable to me, I guess, to like, think of it as, there's kind of a road splitting that divide, if you will, in the property between the kind of who's going to tend to buy the ones on the left versus the ones on the right. And kind of the, where the nice, more communal space is for the units on the left. Just sort of an observation.
Yeah, well, I can, no, I appreciate that. I can tell you from the previous experience, and I, obviously, I can't predict whether or not this will be the case next time around. But I found that, that in the Riverwalk instance, that there, it almost felt like there were certainly people, as you're pointing out, that wanted to sort of live down below and be removed from Main Street and have that sense of community. And then there was a group of folks that wanted more of, almost like a Cambridge port kind of experience, if you will. A little more dense, a little bit more like in the media rays in the middle of things, you know. And, and, and so I, I don't know if that will be, if that's what will happen this time around or not. The two single families kind of open their view up to the lower court as well. And they're kind of right on the edge of that, but it's an interesting thing for me to think about.
Okay. Are we done with the planning board questions and comments? Okay, so I will move us now to the Q and A. And we have two questions so far. So from the public, one is from Janet Miller of 1647 Main Street. And she says, I appreciate the many hours of hard work that Dan Gainsborough has put in to get input into his project next to Riverwalk. I agree with the consensus of the Riverwalk that we approve his plans. My only concern is that I think he only plans to leave one of the mature trees on the property. Would Mr. Gainsborough consider whether it would be possible to leave more trees? And let's just hold responses, I've got a couple more questions here. We just, Dan, maybe you can answer them all together. Next one is from Gary Kleiman of Central Street. He says, can you say more about public access to the open space? Is there access along the driveway or is the access from Westvale or along the river somehow? And then the third is from Jen Flint of 1643 Main Street. Dan mentions Riverwalk as the gold standard for sustainable development. So it seems like a real missed opportunity here where five of the 12 buildings aren't oriented to maximize the solar in waterside. How would those units achieve net zero goals, given their north-south orientation? Also, what's the plan for construction traffic in and out of Riverwalk's driveway and the placement of our existing dumpsters during construction? So three questions there, Dan. Here, let me just, I'll just, I think if I say answer live, that these will become visible to people. Can people see those questions, I hope? Any? Okay, I get some nods here from the group.
Okay, do you want me to try to answer that?
Yes, I think so.
Okay, so, and you can refresh my memory because I'm not seeing your questions, but I.
Okay, sorry. So sure, so the first one was about.
I have it.
Okay.
But you can correct me if I missed. So, so to Janet's point, leaving more mature trees, I would want to, before I speak to that, I would want to just look at what she thinks we're taking down. The plan is to leave whatever mature trees that we can, just as we did with Riverwalk. They need to be healthy and they, and so obviously, one of the, the evaluation is where are they in their life? And are they in a place where we can construct without destroying them? And I think Janet knows this, that one of, that, you know, we did save three of the sugar maples, the 90 plus year old sugar maples. And they eventually lost one of them. And so it's really, it will be, you know, our process will be Jared will either evaluate it or he'll bring in an arborist to assess it. But any trees that we can keep, including the stand of aspen trees that are down by Jen's, Jen's unit on the property line. Jen's, Jen's unit on the property line, we will plan to keep all of those, as many of them as we can. In terms of Gary's question, right now, before we do anything, the public access is down the existing drive and then continues on down the reinforced turf on the west side of the lower court and then ties into the River Walk. So when we shift the road to the west, that access will continue to be maintained during the, during the dawn to dusk time. And then in addition to that, there'll be new access. It would be, well, I think we would probably share that the primary access would be through that existing pathway. And then we would have a connection to the Waterside Commons parcel. And in terms of Jen's comment, that's, those are good. I mean, the PV, she's, she's correct. We obviously, if we could, we'd love to orient all the homes to the, to the sun as much as possible. What, what we will do, we've talked about this already as a design team, we're exploring different roof configurations. It will provide for the ability to have PV panels oriented properly. In addition to that, we have the carbarn structures, which we would have to figure out exactly how, probably through easements. But we would, that provides us more surface area for units that don't have the benefit of the direct southern exposure. You know, it's, 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 it's constants. In a project like this, it's constantly a balancing act. And so we, we twisted the, we rotated the, the two homes on the lower court because, because the, the site was getting narrower and because we really didn't want to be too close to the River Walk community on that side. So it's, it's really kind of a push-pull kind of thing. And in terms of Jen's question about construction plan, I would fully expect that during the construction, we would utilize the existing site, we would access the most, the majority of the construction traffic would, would happen on our new, on the new parcel. And when time presented itself, we would attack the driveway, probably build out the other half. The new portion of the shared drive would be built out. And then we would flip over to the River Walk side and try to make that a very limited period of time where we remove the pavement and, and did the finish work on that. So it could, it would be a pretty narrow, and I can't tell you exactly how long that would be, but it doesn't, there's not, there's not a lot of utilities that would be in that work, in that space. So it should, that work should go pretty quickly. How do I do?
That's okay. There was another question from Mark Loritano. However, I don't have an address for
He lives in River Walk.
Okay. So then, are there plans to add some features or light, feature or lighting to the entrance off of Main Street to clearly mark the entrance to the two developments?
That's a great question. And the short answer to the question is yes. And I don't know exactly what that design, because we just haven't spent enough time on that. And that will be done in cooperation with the River Walk folks and myself and my design team. There's a desire by the fire department as well to, to make it clear when you're, certainly, we can do this as it relates to our the Waterside Commons community, but there'll be a new set of signs, signage program that will clearly identify where, where each home is. And so, yeah, we, we're not sure if that happens right up at the front or if that happens once you come down into it, but at some point in that hundred or so, a hundred feet or so, there'll be, there'll be an opportunity to address that.
So I think the next time you come, we should definitely look deeper at like the landscape plan and perhaps some lighting so that we just get a more comprehensive sense of the site.
Absolutely.
Okay. So that concludes the public comment. And I think that, given the number of open questions and the changes that we saw tonight, that will, you know, now need to be evaluated by town staff. I'm going to continue the discussion to a future meeting. Now, Dan, you still have some things that you need to submit, right, that relative to the revised plans?
We, we do. Most of it has been completed except for the conversations with the various town departments. So we could get that to you relatively quickly. The part that we control, we can get to you pretty quickly. But I, it's hard for me to, to, you know, to know how quickly we can get in front of like the light board and, and the
Yeah. So what I was wondering is, you know, given that our next meeting is May 12th, and that it's likely to be too soon to be able to get everything reviewed, is, you know, should we plan to see you next on our subsequent meeting on May 26th?
I, I think that would be great if it works on your end.
I, I think it probably will. It's the day after Memorial Day, but I think this is going to be a pretty unusual Memorial Day weekend.
Right.
Okay. So I think with that, we can conclude this agenda item. We can bring Burton back into the meeting. And then we can let you guys go.
Thank you so much.
And then we'll bring up our next applicant.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Take care.
And, and then we will bring in the representatives of the next applicant. So let me announce our next agenda item, which is the preliminary subdivision plan number 246, application of science development and permitting LLC for a 22 lot subdivision on 8.935 acres off of 146B, 1440 and 1450 Main Street. So do we have the applicant? I see Burton is back. I see Jeff Ruda. That sounds good. And Richard Harrington. Thank you. So feel free to take it away if you'd like. Would you like to unmute yourself? Richard has, oh.
All set?
I see, I can hear from you, Richard. Yes, I can't hear from Jeff yet.
We are here to basically talk about a, a very vanilla plan, which is the conventional subdivision. And we have a set of plans that I can share the screen with, if that's possible. And talk about the four sheets that we submitted for the preliminary subdivision. Are you able to
Okay, yes, we can see your plan.
These are the stamp plans that are on file with, with the town. And you'll see that I had some text on top just to emphasize a few items. Sheet number one is the location plan, which is, we're at the Court of Highland and Main, which everyone knows. On the top left is the locus, and then in blue is zoning criteria. In the residency, we just need 10,000 square feet of lot area, 80 feet of frontage, 64 feet of lot width. The house is set back 20 feet from the street right away. And then a side yard of 15 feet on each side. And so basically, when you take 15 on each side, that's 30 feet. 80 feet of frontage for a typical house slot, you have a 50 foot wide house. And then the depth is variable across the property and also across the neighborhood when you look at this locus plan. On the bottom left, we have project notes. Note number one is that no waivers are requested to the subdivision rules and regulations pursuant to this plan. This plan, we believe, complies with everything within your rules and regulations. And then also, at the bottom is no 10, and the use of this plan is subject to the issuance of an earth removal special permit. And that's because we exceed the 1,000 cubic yards of earth removal to grade this site as, in accordance with the grades that are shown on the, on the next sheet. So what you have here is, there's other notes relative to, we have three parcels, which I'll show later, about town sewer, town water, and a couple other notes. So I'd just like to move on to sheet number two. And sheet number two is our existing condition plan. And at the bottom, you'll see that label, each plan's labeled on the bottom in blue, so you know which page you're on. Above that, you'll see Main Street and Highland in more of an orange color. The black text are the existing elevations of the contours of the land. So you'll see that there's a number 156 above the label Main Street, so left and right. And then also at the elbow in Highland Street. The graded, all along our entire frontage is at flat, basically at 156. You'll see the purple looking numbers, number 1440, 1450, and then to the left is number 14, 1,406B. That's a, so that means that we have three parcels along Main Street, which allows us to have three sewer connections. Currently, we have two houses, 1440 and 1450, tied together to a town sewer connection right in the middle above the end and main. And then water surfaces go up the sidewalk in the middle and split off to each house. Above the 146B, we have a grade of 156 in Main Street, grades 160, and it goes up to 170 to the west of the existing homes. It drops down to 160, down to 130 to 136 at the back of the property. So what you'll see is, we have an elevation of 170 or 14 feet higher, left to right, parallel with Main Street. You'll see some rectangles and circles. Those are all the percolation tests and test pit information for all the soils that we know exist on the site to properly have this project be viable. We do need to circle back and have additional testing and also have witness testing by the public works now that they have a new full-time staff. Page number three, or sheet three, is grading and drainage plan. You'll see again that, that our proposed road at the, at the, above the D in drainage, it's elevation 156. We're going to start pitching down in elevation to elevation 150. Once we get past the frontage house slots on Long Main Street, you'll see a red number one and number two. That's our first set of catch basins to catch the water from Main Street to this point, prior to the intersection with Road B, which is a cul-de-sac off to the right. We're going to continue down to one elevation 140, along Road A to 136, and then we're going to have catch basins three and four. Drain manholes connect the water down from the road to that point. To the right, our catch bases five and six, which are in the lawn areas or the side yards of lot number eight, and then there's a catch base that's a low point where you see 133, and that's catch base to seven. So there's seven catch basins in red associated with Road A. And Road A begins at Main Street and ends with a cul-de-sac turnaround. The right of ways required to be 50 feet wide, left to right. And then we have a 26 foot wide pavement requirement. And then we have curbing in a five foot wide sidewalk, connected to the existing sidewalk in Main Street, down the right-hand side, and then around to the back house. Sidewalk also is on the lower side and coming around Road B to that point. Catch basins eight and nine on Road B and 10 is at the low point. So there's basically 10 catch basins that'll be associated with the, with the roadway network. And each Road A and B, that water caught by those catch basins will be sent into sediment four bays. So for Road B, on the right-hand side, we have a sediment four bay number two where that 127 foot contour is, and that's the bottom of the sediment four bay. So your dirtiest water will be diverted to this area first, and then when it fills up, and then the remaining will be sent to a subsurface infiltration system under the cul-de-sac island. The same holds true for Road A. We're going to pitch down to the back property line of 127. And then the remainder will go into the subsurface beneath the cul-de-sac island of Road A. Basically, the requirements for landscaping under these islands are to provide loam and seed, which is the alternative we choose here with some shrubs. There's an emergency overflow that is required for any drainage system that will go back and along the back property line for System A. And then for System B, it would come down also to the low point where we have our onsite isolated wetlands at this location. So currently, all water today flows down to that same wetland. And tomorrow, once this is built, this will provide the same recharge to meet the requirements, pre-treat it, provide the recharge, and then any excess will go back to the existing wetlands that it goes to today. Along the frontage, you'll see that I previously mentioned that we have three parcels along the existing sewer line in Main Street. We are proposing that these three lots be connected to town sewer. We have, the remainder will be on septic systems. Each one will be its own individual lot, individual owner. As you go down the left side, so lot F will have town sewer, lots one, two, three, and four down the left side of Wesley side of Road A will have their septic systems in the back of the yards to the side towards Center Village. We'd have roof recharge in the front yards to collect the roof runoff for each house. Similar with the back each lot as you go around the horn.
Richard, I can't hear you anymore. I think we may have lost Richard. Oh, here he is, but I can't hear him. Still can't hear him. He's not on mute either. Jeff, I'm not sure if you can contact Richard?
Yep. Can you hear me, Mr. Chairman?
Now we can.
Jeff, we can hear you, but we still can't hear Rich.
Richard, yeah.
Still talking.
I'm calling his cellphone right now.
Okay.
They can't hear you. They can't hear you. Okay. He's trying to work it out right now, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you.
Hello?
Back.
There was an interfering loop, and I couldn't see it because my, my, my apologies.
No problem. I think we made it to, I think we were about to go to frame three of your presentation when things got cut off.
We hang up Jeff's phone. What do you know? Jeff provided a benefit tonight. That's fantastic. Let's see, page down. So sheet two, we just talked about the existing contours.
Right. And you were going here and you were talking about the catch basins and, and you were talking about the, at each of the cul-de-sacs and the whole water.
Okay.
So I think that actually we may be ready to go to
Sheet four.
Yeah, I think so. We heard about the infiltration system, so.
And we'll meet, we'll, we'll sit down with the new town engineering staff and go over everything. And then this is sheet four, the frontage lots, which you might have saw previously with the A and R plan. A1 and D1 represent the frontage for the existing homes that are there today. And once those are removed, you can see the color-coded lot frontages, so Road A is in blue, lots one through nine and 16. Road B has lots 10 through 15. In the back of each cul-de-sac, there's drainage easements for the sediment four bays. And then the building envelopes are shown. So I'll, I'll leave it at that, and then we can answer some questions.
Okay. Well, there were some questions in the town planners' report.
Certainly.
Yeah. Maybe you want to try to address some of those.
Certainly. The, the planner's report dated April 16th, which is basically broken up into six sections. Section five talks about the town department comments, and then section six, Elizabeth incorporated all those into it.
Yes.
And we, I can go through those. If I go to section six on page
Yeah, that's a quick summary. Yeah.
That's a quick summary.
Yeah.
Basically, we're comfortable with all these provisions. I can, number one and two, mention references the plan and no waivers. Number three is a compliant cul-de-sac. Number four talks about complying with the stormwater regulations, which we'll do. Number five talks about providing stormwater calculations, which we'll do like we did previously. The water goes first into the sediment four bay, number six, and then gets diverted into the subsurface. And number seven is the DVMH is a diversion manhole. So basically, there's a lower pipe
And number seven is the DVMH is a diversion manhole. So basically, there's a lower pipe and a higher pipe. And the dirty water goes out the low pipe first, so the clean water can go to, to the other. Number eight, the intentions are to have it be a public way. When you read the subdivision regulations, their section on stormwater talks about methods to detain, detain the stormwater and provide recharge. And the use of subsurface infiltration is within the stormwater bylaw of the public works. And we're understanding it's been used across town in different locations. So we'll sit down again with, with, with town staff when we can and have that full discussion. You still hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Number nine is to define, finish up, provide the design speed of the roadway. We're in full compliance with the regulations, and it'll be a low level of speed. Ten, we have a sidewalk along the side. We talked about having a sidewalk. Eleven, we'll add additional any easements that relative to drainage.
So just back to ten, you're, you're going to revise the plan to provide a cul-de-sack all the way around? I mean, a sidewalk all the way around the cul-de-sack or no?
Uh, yes. There's always, I usually end at the last driveway, but looks like they want me to extend it along a little further. So yes, we'll, we'll send the sidewalk around the whole ball, but that's what's necessary.
Okay, thank you.
And keep it on one side for the straightaways. Eleven talks about easements. We'll provide those in detail in the definitive. Twelve talks about, they have the right to review anything further. We're okay with that. Thirteen, I haven't, I've yet to see a report from the water and sewer that says we comply with something upfront. We meet with them about five times on every job. The applicant, we're opposed town sewer. We need to talk about them. Whether we have to get additional approval, similar to the planning board, we go to the public works commission where they endorse the, the plan for the water design. Personally, I've been through that process before. It's just one more step. Fourteen, the subdivision regulations. It's a cul-de-sack, so we have two dead-end water mains. They're asking to see if we can loop that through. And we'll sit down with them and see if there's a method of adjusting the water mains to improve the water quality, basically, for the future residents. So that thirteen and fourteen is meeting with the staff of that. Fourteen is standard, well, fifteen is standard board of health. We're in agreement with that. If we do exceed the one thousand, then it might just have to be, again, back to the public works for the town sewer. Sixteen, we meet the fire department is comfortable with what we have. We do need to come up with street names, which is typical of they'll have their own street addresses, their own, you know, mailboxes and, and street late, you know, street numbers. Seventeen, we'll have the required hydrants, fire hydrants, as they're showing on the plan right now, and we'll have them double-check at definitive. Eighteen, we will provide a construction safety plan like we did on a previous type of project at the site. And so they'll have the chance to review that. That's just standard. Nineteen, we'll resubmit this design back to the Army Corps of Engineers. We had a sign-off already from them or recognition of the previous one, so we'll do that again. Twenty, each septic system will be designed in accordance with the regulations, which are the state Title V.
Sure.
Which is number twenty A and the local board of health regulations twenty B. We, we're very familiar with those. We'll provide town water. Twenty-two, any, if there are any wells, we have to meet the requirements of setbacks or other quality things. Twenty-three, we'll comply with that. I think it's just a blanket statement that's included now with every decision. We propose to have gas service down the road, so we don't anticipate any underground storage tanks. And that actually might even be relative to oil tanks, which are obsolete right now. Twenty-four, tree stops, we will, we will not bury anything on the site. Again, another standard requirement. Twenty-five, all lots shall comply with the town's underground utility bylaw. I believe that's just with the Concomitant Light Plant, so we'll, we'll eat that also. Be underground electric from Main Street and cable. Twenty-six, prior to this, we'll meet with the Concomitant Light Plan to, again, find out which pole we're going to come off of and where things need to be basically shown. We'll basically come off of Main Street, across the street from the road, and go underground and then continue underground throughout the entire project. And then we will meet twenty-seven, and again, meeting the Concomitant Light Plant full standards and requirements. And so we will do that as well.
Okay. Thanks, Rich.
Yep, thank you.
So now I will turn it over to questions from the board. Does anyone on the board have a question about the project, the, the subdivision preliminary plan?
This is Kristen. This is the first subdivision plan that has come in front of me, as far as I know, and probably a couple other members as well. Is there anything that we should know about kind of our role in this or?
So this is the preliminary subdivision plan. So this is the first phase. It's an optional, but strongly recommended phase of the process where the, we're really looking at the technical feasibility of creating a subdivision on this parcel. So, you know, that's the layout of the roads, whether the, the adequate right-of-way is provided, the drainage, the lot sizes and, and dimensions, you know, shape. So basically, and then whether any waivers would be required from us in order to create a subdivision. So in, in this case, the applicant's not asking for any waivers. And so our role is primarily just to verify at this stage of the game whether indeed twenty-two lots can be laid out that meet the residency requirements, whether there's adequate drainage being provided, whether there's a road that's the right width, whether there's the right sidewalks and so forth that are all in our rules and regulations, you know, is the basic requirements. Based upon the approval of the preliminary subdivision plan, then the developer would go back and create a definitive plan. That plan, you know, might vary some from this, but that, you know, it will provide all of the details and, you know, that would be required to build it out. And so this is taken at the beginning of the process before there's a significant design investment. And also just for us to be able to weigh in whether we believe that there are any waivers that would be required in order for such a thing to be delivered. I didn't know if Elizabeth wanted to add into that any, but that's basically where we're at.
I have nothing to add.
Okay. So if there aren't any other comments from the board, I think that we're ready to proceed to public comment. Before we start the public comment, I would just note that acknowledge that we, as the board, are in receipt of letters that we've received from Jeff Edgar's, Anna Willis, Brian Burt, Lyndle, Lyndle Blodgett, Margaret Schumacher, and Ellen Quackenbush, and that have been distributed to the board. And also that in most cases, Elizabeth has responded when there were questions being asked by the public. Many of them were really about the kind of the latitude that we have as a board around approval, you know, around the kind of conditions that we can make, and also about the stage of the process. So this is an entirely different process from the planned residential development, which is a special permit. This subdivision process is more of a by right process where there is much less board input other than really validating the feasibility at this stage. So with that, let me move to the Q and A. The first thing is from Paul Winkler of fourteen fourteen Main Street, who's in a butter. He said, please speak to the degree to which the tree bylaw applies to this project. Ethically, the neighbors desire to maintain as many mature legacy trees on the lots as are possible and hide as many of the new homes behind trees or the hillside. A reading of the tree bylaw appears to exempt a subdivision from its provisions. So maybe we'll start, Elizabeth, if you might want to speak to the role of the tree preservation bylaw in the case of a subdivision project.
So the correct answer is yes, the requirement of the tree bylaw does not apply to the subdivision of land under the conquered, town of conquered subdivision rules and regulations. So.
But is it true as well that once the lots are laid out, that the perimeter of those lots would fall under this, the tree by law?
So what I would envision, because this will be the first definitive subdivision plan to come through since the tree bylaw was adopted.
That's right.
As part of the definitive subdivision plan, they will have to provide very detailed grading plans for the subdivision, for the roadway and the stormwater drainage system and the utilities that are within that road right-of-way. And the grading required for the construction of the road. Any grading or construction that's required for the individual house lots for the construction of a dwelling, those would be subject to the tree preservation bylaw at the time a building permit is requested.
So you're saying that the construction that's happening prior to when the house construction is happening is really not covered? So that the lot essentially could be cleared of all trees in the course of the grading and, and the layout of the roads? And then subsequently, when the houses are constructed, well, there wouldn't be any trees there in the first place, but that, that in theory, then there would be?
Yeah, so what I'm saying is that the, the clearing of the, the grading that is required for the construction of the road and for the stormwater drainage system and the utilities within the road are not subject to the tree bylaw. So.
Sure.
If, so they're going to have to show very detailed grading plans for that. And anything that's outside of that grading required for just the subdivision, roadway, stormwater, and utilities, those areas outside of that require grading, those would be part of the individual house lots. And that would be subject to the tree preservation bylaw at the time they filed for a building permit.
Okay, so you mean that presumably if twelve months went by before they did the building permit, then perhaps anything that happened beforehand wouldn't have mattered? I guess that's why you're raising the whole point of a building permit.
Well, I'm raising the point of the building permit because that's the trigger in the tree preservation.
Yeah, right. Okay. Thanks. Any other questions from the public? So not seeing any additional questions in the Q and A, I think that we're at the position of making a motion relative to this preliminary subdivision plan. So may I ask?
Yeah. Matt, I'd move to grant, that we moved to, to grant approval of the preliminary plan for Center and Main, fourteen forty Main Street, Concord, Massachusetts, sheet one to four dated March four, twenty twenty by Williams and Spurius with conditions as stated in the town planners' report dated April sixteenth, twenty twenty.
And do I have a second? Nathan, your mic is live, so, oh, here we go, Kristen.
A second.
Okay. And any discussion of this motion? Okay, then I.
I just, I just want to make sure you give give folks, because it takes longer to type in the public comment, so let's just make sure they have had a chance to type in. Because I, I think when we said, okay, there's no more public comment, it could have been that people.
Right. Well, I think that I've acknowledged that we received quest, you know, emails and, and letters from the public and that have been responded. And I, I do see there's one more comment from Ellen Quackenbush. And we did just receive her letter this evening, and her comments mostly pertain to the definitive subdivision plan. So I don't think that Elizabeth had an opportunity to respond to her, but I believe that her, her comments will be addressed as part of the definitive subdivision plan process. Okay, so then I'd like to make a, oh, yes, Kate, did you have another?
I'm not sure if it's, if this is the right time to ask, but at some point, can Elizabeth just walk through with the sequencing of the definitive subdivision approval versus the special permit they need from the zoning board of appeals? Like, is it, do they need the definitive plan approved before they go to a special permit so they know how much they need the permit for? Or does it happen sort of at the same time? Or is it not clear?
Nope. So there's basically three options. They can file for a definitive plan and should the planning board move forward during that timeframe to approve the definitive plan, they would place a condition that prior to endorsement of the definitive plan, which is necessary for the plan to be finalized and recorded, they would be required to receive the special permit from the Board of Appeals for the earth removal and record that special permit prior to endorsement of the definitive plan. They can file the special permit first and go through the special permit process first before filing the definitive plan. Or they can file them both simultaneously. And the board could, the two boards could look to have some type of joint meeting to discuss. And then, as you've done before for other projects, and then go off separately and take action separately. But so those are the three very different options.
Thank you.
Okay. So I'd like to call for a roll call vote. So when I call upon you, please unmute your line and make your vote. So I'm going to start with Alan. Alan, say it. Alan? Could you unmute yourself? Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Kate? Kate McNeely?
Yes.
Burton Flint?
Yes.
Nathan Bosdat?
abstain.
Kristen Ferguson?
Yes.
Haley Overdahl?
Yes.
And then voting on my own behalf, Matthew Johnson, yes. So that closes this. We have approval of the preliminary subdivision plan. And we can move on to our next agenda item. So that is, I'll go ahead and, and share. Okay. So the, we're moving on to administrative business, and we have two different approval-not-required plants. The first one is for ninety-three Coolidge Road and one oh nine Oak Road. So Elizabeth, could you take us through this A and R? Elizabeth, I see you're still on mute.
Okay.
Yep, I can hear you now. Thanks.
Okay, I'm trying to, to share my screen. And all right, can, I don't, can you see Oak Road plan?
No, we're not seeing your.
We're not seeing it yet, no.
Okay. Okay, so share screen.
Here, I can bring it up if you prefer. Is that what you're looking for?
That's what I'm looking for.
Okay.
So that is Oak Road, correct? Yes.
Border Sudbury. Or borders of Sudbury River, excuse me.
So this is, these are two existing lots, Lot one A, Lot two A. And at some time, I think it was like in the seventies, the owners of Lot one A provided frontage and area for, at the time, it was two A was a much larger lot. It encompassed all the way so that they could put in this cul-de-sac an extension of Oak Road and divide it into two lots. What they didn't know at the time, and for whatever reason, they actually reduced their frontage to below what is required in the zone district. So what this plan does, and it's, it's very difficult to see at this scale, but the property owner of Lot two A is is giving them, I believe it's twenty-one feet of frontage. This sliver right here of frontage and area.
Right here?
Yep. So if you look, yeah, so in the, there's the little enlargement to the right.
This stretch right here, yeah. This, from this line up there, yeah.
So they're giving about twenty-one feet of frontage, so that Lot one A becomes a compliant lot by area and frontage.
How many square feet of space is it?
Oh, that's in the.
Looks like it's about eight square feet and twenty-one.
Twenty-one feet of frontage and eight square feet of area.
What a guess. Okay.
No, four, oh, sorry, fourteen square feet of area.
Okay. So there were also a couple of other documents on the website with this.
The other documents on the website have to deal with permissions from the property owners. One of the property owners, they have been in isolation in Milan for the past two and a half months. So
I see.
Both property owners had to work through getting powers of attorneys for the attorneys to file the applications.
I see. Okay. All right, so may I ask our clerk for a motion on this?
Yeah. I move that we endorse, the planning board endorses the plan for, this is Peter and Rachel Alternative and Sally Walther by Stamske and McNary, Inc., dated March third, twenty twenty, as approval not required because the division of the tract of land shown on the plan is not a subdivision, because every lot shown on the plan has the required area and frontage for the residence A zoning district as required by the Concord zoning by law on an adequate public way, Oak Road and Coolidge Road, and to authorize the chair clerk or town planner to endorse the plan.
Okay, do you have a second? I've got, Alan has raised his hand. Okay, I'll acknowledge that Alan is the second. And then I'll, once again, take a roll call vote. So I need each of you to unmute at the moment that you're given it. So starting again with Alan, Mr. Sayah. Okay, Mr. Flint?
Yes.
Mr. Buzzdett?
Yes.
Ms. McInney?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Ms. Overdahl?
Yes.
And voting on my own behalf, Mr. Johnson, yes. Okay, so then we'll move to the next A and R, which I don't know if Elizabeth, you're now in a position to share?
So I will click on share screen.
Okay.
And select my window, and I will share.
Hey, it's looking good. Looks like it's going to come up. Yep. That's the first one. I see Oak Road.
And here we go.
All right.
Which it's upside down.
Pittsburgh Turnpike.
Yep, so.
If you hit that little squiggly in the very, there you go, hit that. That'll put you in Acrobat, and now you can zoom and do stuff.
I don't think I can rotate it, though. So this is Route one seventeen, Pittsburgh Turnpike. And this is going off towards Sudbury. This is Plainfield. Over on this end is the intersection of one seventeen and Sudbury Road. This is right here. This down here is the entrance to the Shottick Country Club Golf Course. This is all part of the golf course, all of this property. What Nishodik Country Club is doing is carving off two separate building lots that will have the required frontage and area off Pittsburgh Turnpike. The property is in the Residence A zoning district, which requires forty thousand square feet and a hundred fifty feet of frontage. And at least fifty percent of the area outside the floodplain of Wetlands Conservancy District. So this plan shows that each of these lots meets that requirement or those three requirements.
Okay. So any questions from the board? If not, again, turning to our clerk, could you make a motion, please?
Sure. I move that we endorse the plan for Nishodik Country Club by Meisner Brim Corporation dated March twelfth, twenty twenty, as approval not required because the division of the tract of land shown on the plan is not a subdivision, because all of the lots have the required area and frontage for the Residence A zoning district as required by the Concord zoning by law on an adequate public way in Pittsburgh Turnpike, and to authorize the chair clerk or town planner to endorse the plan.
Okay, second, please. Nathan, we'll give it to Nathan this time. All right, you're going to take a roll call vote, Mr. Sayah? Mr. Flint?
Yes.
Mr. Buzzdett?
Yes.
Ms. McInney?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Ms. Overdahl?
Yes.
And voting on my own behalf, Mr. Johnson, yes. Okay, so next item of business is the minutes from what seems like an eternity ago. I believe it's the March tenth minutes, and I have previously sent some notes back to Nancy where I had three tiny comments as usual. The first was on page three about the Nuclear Metal Star Met Agenda Item, the second paragraph, second line, to change the two words superfund to the single word superfund. Secondly, on page four, article thirty-six, the first paragraph, second line change suggest to suggested. And then thirdly, on page four, article thirty-eight, change clarify the differences between philanthropic and education to clarify the differences between philanthropic and education organizations. I know that those were gripping, but necessary changes. So did anybody else have any amendments that they would like to make to the minutes? Okay, if not, I move that we approve the minutes of the March tenth meeting of the planning board as amended. Second, okay. And I don't know if we need a roll call vote, but I'm going to go ahead. Mr. Sayah? Mr. Flint?
Yes.
Mr. Buzzdett?
Yes.
Ms. McInney?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Ms. Overdahl?
Yes.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, yes. Okay, I think we may have completed our agenda. Now, at this point, we do have our general public comment period. Now, I think that we did receive those letters. I've already acknowledged those letters mainly because they were all about the preliminary subdivision plan. But if there is any other public comment we could entertain in the Q and A, it does seem like there is a comment from the public, from Mr. Jack Madigan. I don't believe we have his address, though I do believe he's commented at previous meetings. And so his comment is, "With the COVID nineteen impact on the economy, is there anything the town could do to make sure financing will be in place and secure prior to the start of the project and clearing of the property of trees?" I assume he's referring to the Main Street project, the fourteen forty Main Street project, I should say. "We do not want, and I sort of be on the site, if financing dries up or disappears, thanks." Okay, so having read the public comment, I think that we're ready to adjourn. So thanks, everyone, and thanks especially for your patience. This is a new medium for us, and I think in spite of some minor technical difficulties, we got through it pretty well. So until next time. See you.
Good night.
Good night.